Good evening. Today is Monday, August 6, 2018, and we are here for the Cabarrus County Board of Education Work Session. I'll call the meeting to order. Board members will take a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
Was that Mr. Harrison? Mr. Harrison made the motion. Dr. Kirk made the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes 7-0. The first item is a report from Mr. Tim Lauder regarding our current construction projects. Oh, and we have Brian Cone with us as well. And first, I will thank them both for taking the board members on tours and a couple different sets of tours this week, or last week, I should say. And let me tell you, it was plenty wet and muddy. Nice progress on the high school, but it's pretty sloppy out there.
And I guess...
If you can hit the mic.
Yes.
Is it on?
Yes.
Okay.
I guess what we need to do is talk to you a little bit tonight about where the status of our projects and where they stand currently. Obviously, the weather has not been our friend this summer in the high school project. The soil's not our friend in the wintertime, but now the weather has been rather rude to us in the last month. But they have made a lot of progress, but we do feel like they're quite a bit behind schedule. What you just got passed out to you was a report from the architect that kind of outlines some of the issues they see in the project schedule that exists today, and knowing that we do have some outstanding requests for days based on some of our previous weather and soil problems. And so, at this point in time, you know, most of you were able to see the progress we have going on. We've got a long way to go.
This thing's supposed confidential. Do we need to close session for that, or is it still?
No.
And I think now it was confidential as of that date.
Date, correct.
Now we're ready to discuss it.
So we'll just open it up for discussion. If you want to do one project and then do next one, you want to talk about the high school first, I guess?
Yeah, let's talk about the high school, I think, first.
With that, obviously, there's, we've asked the branch to look at opportunities to accelerate. They've given us a pretty hefty price to accelerate per month. But even on that, with that price tag, they cannot guarantee we'd finish on time, even with acceleration, because, one, they just don't have the labor force. And they can't get the labor force to do the acceleration necessary to get it done on time. And so, that's a concern we have. So even if we ask them to accelerate, we're not sure that they could do it, even if we spent, you know, the $120,000 a month for the next 12 months to do it. And they're still not guarantee us that we'd be finished on time. It is the architect's opinion that several major items within the construction schedule are probably not able to recover from the current schedule where we are now. And so with that, we're opening it up for some discussions. I know most of you saw it. You can ask us some questions about what you saw and what you feel would be our most impactful items, and Frank can weigh in on that as well. So, open for discussion.
Board members, any initial comments?
What's the weather been like in Cabarrus County lately?
Yeah.
Unfortunately, when you visited the other day, we were just finishing up a ten inches of rain in 10 days. So it's been pretty brutal at the job site itself.
One thing I will just say on here on the first page, I do appreciate that they identified some misfabricated building components.
Yes.
So that we maintain the structural integrity.
Correct.
We had a couple pieces of our precast that came in a little bit too long, and they had to be taken down and then, you know, shortened and fabricated, engineered, and had to send them a report, then reinstalled. It took a few days, about eight days off their erection schedule.
Just clarifying, if we do not meet the deadline, then we're in a go-no-go situation. Is that right? Will we need to determine whether we're going to open a year later? Is that what we're facing if this doesn't happen?
I think that's going to be the ultimate resort of our discussion. As we feel like we just can't open the school on time, there's not a whole lot of alternatives based on the fact that we've got, what, five or six schools will be redistricted in order to make the population of this school available. And in not opening up on time, it's really not an option. So either we do or we don't. I'm not sure a mid-year or anything of that could even be close, you know? It's obviously a nightmare to do so. We've had quite a bit of discussion about that administratively.
And I think when we look at the size of this school, as Mr. Lauder mentioned, the number of students in schools that are affected, and with the high school, we need the full property available for parking, for athletics, for other extracurriculars. You know, with an elementary school, if we have the main parking lot available and buses can get in and out, we have a little more flexibility. We don't have all the property to deal with, but in a high school, we do. So that's concerning. Mr. Shoemaker?
Well, based on what I saw on the property, we had water running out of the building, water puddled everywhere. The foundation where the panels were going to be erected for the high school were completely buried, and I don't think this storm that we just had helped us out at all. But as I go through the letter from the architect, you know, we're seeing, they're talking about a lot of different schedules that have slid due to various, not just the rain, but some other issues as well. How much of a schedule slide do you think, you know, as we talked on, I think we had a review on Friday, at that point, we hadn't really factored in all the rain from the last week, which they had noted that in the last 10 days as of Friday, before the Storm Friday, they had had over 10 inches of rain up to that point. And I don't know what kind of accumulations we had this weekend and what we had today. But how much do you think the schedule has slid based on that information and the weather that they've had so far?
I would, I guess if you're asking how much of the schedule delay is impacted because of weather versus other items, is that what you're asking?
Right now.
Yes, right now.
Yeah, so I, my guess, if you were looking at it from a percentage base, that 75% of the delays now are directly related to the site work challenges that we've run into with, you know, unsuitable soils, the groundwater that we've been dealing with, the additional work that we've had to capture because of the site. Those are delays that we're seeing now. Obviously, the weather during last winter didn't help that situation, but, you know, the impact that we have over the last two to three weeks with the amount of rain we've had, we probably, to be honest, haven't seen those days captured yet from a schedule standpoint. We only get impacted, or we only get requested days for additional contract when we get our billing, which is once a month.
Okay. So, when we go through the construction schedule on this letter, you know, we have ID 47 that talked about east side of the building, and the work hadn't started. It was supposed to be completed by 6/5/19, and it's not going to be completed on the date shown. Do you happen to have an idea of what kind of slide that date is looking at?
No.
Or any of these, any of these items that they have provided to us as dates that weren't complete at this point, or because of...
So I have, so I have requested from Branch to provide us an updated schedule that captures the actual start dates of some of these IDs that we have, that shows us how it will be impacting the overall completion date on that schedule. Once they capture those actual start dates, it moves all those dependent tasks that are a part of that. It moves them ahead in the schedule and gives us a more realistic date as to when substantial completion will be and final completion.
Okay. Go ahead.
Their current schedule, though, shows them beyond their contract time at present time. And right now, their contract time is already August 26. So they're well beyond that with their actual schedule, not including these impacts which may push it even further.
And the contract time doesn't mean completion of the punch list items? That's just a occupancy?
There's a substantial completion is what's the contract.
And allows you to occupy the building, but you still have a lot of miscellaneous activities that have to occur?
Yes, sir.
And obviously, August 26 is not a good date to have that happen to us, even if they make the schedule up between now and then.
Right. So Ms. Reimer, how does that affect, how will that affect you and the efforts that you, your team is undergoing with alignment and all the other?
Actually, Cropper GIS is working on that with a county committee, and so my department actually is just kind of a support to them. He will be giving you a report next week to the board at our meeting and hopefully be prepared to answer any of those questions then. Mr. Harrison? Any questions?
What would this board's drop-dead date be? On what date would this board need to make that go-no-go decision?
I think we're here.
Tonight?
No, I think by next Monday for sure.
Okay.
But if we have some consensus tonight, then Ms. Reimer can notify Cropper about, yes, we believe this is the direction we're heading in. So please come prepared, you know, to address how we would handle any realignment activities.
I would just say the only thing is, and I think Tim and Brian could probably speak to it as well, I just don't know that a lot will change between now and next week. So that's, and the sooner, I think, for our families, our planning, and everyone else, unless we thought there was going to be a change between now and next Monday, I'm not telling you have to vote tonight or make the decision, but I don't see a lot changing between now and next week, except for more bad weather.
Mr. Walter?
Do we have a superintendent's recommendation? Is that your recommendation postponed, or we don't?
Well, I think we can, I mean, when, as Tim just articulated, so right now, the substantial completion date, and you guys correct me with any terminology I say wrong, means that we, right now, if we're on schedule, then the first day we can occupy the building is the first day of school, right? So, and then, as Mr. Shoemaker said, so the building won't be finished until mid-October. And what he's said now is that, right now, we're not on that schedule. So that we are definitely beyond that schedule, which may be updated. So if you can't occupy the building until after school starts, and it appears like we won't be finished until a best-case scenario of end of October or November, and that's going to be probably best case, I'm not sure there is a choice at this point.
Okay. So you're saying end of October or November? Because this memo didn't say that. The memo said that it's been delayed because of, what, about six or seven different reasons here? Weather, unsuitable soils in the eastern portion of the site, misfabrication of the building components, correcting miscoordination between trades and scope gap?
You guys correct me if I'm wrong, but I think what they're saying is that the, today, the building will not be finished until about mid-October, and that does not account for any of these things moving that schedule forward. So I'm throwing out a date of October or November. From what I know as a, as a layman, is that's the best-case scenario, and strong scenario that it won't be ready then, right?
We are looking at their schedule board on a weekly basis, and their schedule board keeps getting pushed. These individual line items keep getting pushed. And in doing so, it will ultimately push the end date. They can only compress so much within that schedule to do so. He highlighted some of the areas here that he knew were milestone dates that would help not push that schedule forward. So he didn't give us a cumulative total, because it doesn't, you don't have a cumulative total, because they won't all just add.
Right. I mean, you just read some of these things, and it's kind of just concerning to see some, you know, construction schedule includes unrealistic activity durations and sequencing. Well, whose fault is setting that?
The contractor sets up a schedule, and they set a timeline in which they feel like they can do these items at the original master's schedule. Sometimes, I think they get a little aggressive with that, and sometimes they take a little bit too much time for some items. But, and some of the items he noted here, he thought the timelines that they had put in their overall schedule were unrealistically small. And therefore, they were going to be expanded just because they really physically couldn't do that much work in five days, 10 days, or whatever it might be. It may be a 30-day duration job, and they may have put 20 days in. In that case, they automatically gained 10 days because that was really an unrealistic duration for that particular item.
Are there penalties for the company if they don't finish on time?
There are, yes, sir.
What are those?
$500 a day.
$500 a day?
Mm-hmm.
So, and again, goes back to whatever our expenses for delaying this project. I guess discussion for...
Is LS 3P here?
Not this evening, no. They were unable to attend this evening. But they have said that they could attend next Monday's business meeting if we would like.
Dr. Kirk?
How much of this falls under force majeure in terms of stopping the meter from running? If we've got 75% attributable to weather, and I'm sure there's a force majeure clause and penalties, how much do they get to dodge because of inclement weather?
There's obviously allowance in there for so many days of rain outside of the norm, and they'd use it based on the average with NOAA.
It's a five-year average of the NOAA chart per day, and it has to be, it has to be at least a measurable amount over a tenth of an inch of rain to be able to classify it as a weather day.
We pretty much have those about every day.
Yeah.
But we have in the past three weeks. So there are some weather delays that will be accumulated, and there will be allowances that they will have. What they will do, and that will push the liquidated damage day back, because they probably already do those days.
And just on the point of the penalties, Ms. Clutz? How would the county see the potential delay? So they've already acquired the school funding, but then we have other money in this year's budget, I think, that would be to purchase furniture fixtures, equipment. So how would the county perceive that?
So we've had some of those conversations, some preliminary conversations with the county. I hate to speak for them, but the message that I get is they don't care one way or the other. It doesn't impact them one way or the other, what the board decides. There, we have set aside some money that will transfer to another year, the operating costs, so that will delay, so that will actually help the county in the financial position. Some of the other dollars, like furniture and that type of thing, we would want to go ahead and order the furniture and put the furniture in the building and that kind of thing. So those wouldn't delay. So it's just a mixed bag. I'm not getting from the county that they have a preference one way or the other, but it's workable.
Mr. Powell?
Are you aware of existing measures that they're taking to accelerate, or measures that they've already taken without coming to us? Other than just putting rock on the site?
No, they've actually are working five-ten's and six, five-ten's and an eight on Saturday. It's about 48 hours, 58 hours a week. Most trades are working. So they have accelerated a six-day week, but I say you can only get so much work out of the crews that you have existing. It's not like they have a man, the job site. There's probably 200 to 250 people on the job site every single day. It's just physically trying to get the work done. With the rain delays, they have to stop and go home. But they have, every trade that can work, even with the inclement weather, is working. I mean, we were out there the other morning, it was raining, but they had crews, anything that could work on concrete that they could get to, or anything. They were actually erecting panels in the rain, but they were doing all they could, even with, you know, with the rain not being too heavy. So they are working every hour they're available to work. And when they're not, they're actually working some on Sundays to make up for the time they lost during the week.
So I'm looking through the, I guess, the construction schedule examples that have kind of caused some delays. And many of these dates are, I guess, preclude the start of the rainy season here.
Right.
Which I guess would be around July 24th or July 23rd. And some of these timelines were not hit before that, that date in particular. They address those in a different manner than just, it's raining because that was before the rain started.
Many of those were pushed back because of the grading issues we had in the winter. We had to push back the grading and not be able to have some of the building sites available as we were coming through the process. The building pad was probably two months delayed at least in the main project, just the building pad, not counting all the peripheral work around it. We say finished probably some of that up to, I guess, almost two months past for all the grading on the main site, because of all the soil delays we had and the water issues we had and the other groundwater, not above groundwater, but underground water we had during the winter months during the rough grading portion of the project.
Now, we had another rain spurt that caused problems with continued grading. Didn't we have a previous rain spurt earlier in the year?
Early in the winter, yes. We had a, you know, pretty wet winter, and of course, that made the groundwater table continue to run on us. We ended up putting a lot of strange drains in around the building in order to bring that water off and keep it getting, from getting to the surface and contaminated what we had already built. I mean, obviously, we spent a lot of money building building pads, and we couldn't allow the groundwater to come in and saturate that and lose that dirt that we already done.
Are you aware of any costs that the contractor or the architect has incurred to try to remedy some of the scheduling issues, like the panels that were, had to be refabricated and that kind of thing? Do they keep, are they keeping track of any of that? Are they incurring that, or do they have to get permission?
They may be incurring it, but they're not passing it along.
Are they, are they kind of mentioning it to you to tally, or to kind of make you aware that? I guess, I guess when panels are refabricated, there's an expense to somebody.
For sure.
But, okay, all right. So there's not really a cost associated with that that's given to us, like it cost us another...
It's not a cost to us. It is a cost to the contractor or the subcontractor or the manufacturer, whichever, whoever's, you know, responsible for that condition.
We don't, I mean, it doesn't matter to us necessarily.
You don't say we don't care. Obviously, we care. But we, obviously, it's not an expense, and therefore, they don't pass it to us.
We'd rather have the time anyway.
We'd rather have the time than the money, yes, sir. Absolutely.
Mrs. Carpenter?
Well, the one thing that I would say, if we did delay, I would say, the only thing I could see that would maybe be an advantage, of course, would be the, we would have time to see our fields get, you know, a full season of growth, which sometimes we, if we rush things, they don't have time to fully get grown in. I would say that would be an advantage. We would have a full season to get those grown in. I hate to see us, you know, rush, 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 and maybe something not be done right. I'd rather see it done right the first time, and thus not have to come back and redo things. And that's the only concern that I have in rushing and doing something. I'd rather see us do it right the first time. We're looking at a very large project, and I want to see it done right. And a lot of times, if you get in, rush, and do something, you do it wrong. And I want to see it done right.
Board members? Mr. Powell?
In this letter, it mentions that LS 3P has heard from other contractors on other projects. What, do you, are you aware of other projects that they have going on that are similar in size? Are they building a whole bunch of schools right now, or?
They have a high, they have a middle school that they're getting ready to start down in Gastonia that is just coming out of the ground. But to get more specific with you, Mr. Powell, I'd have to just ask them.
Okay. That's why I was wondering if they were here.
I believe that they currently had another project with Branch, to be honest, but I don't know what school that is.
Just one that you're aware of?
That I'm aware of, yes.
Okay.
Board members?
Since you're aware of one, do you know if it's on schedule?
One that I do know of that was not an LS 3P job, but Branch was a part of, was not on schedule.
And keep in mind, I think, at bidding, we only had two firms. Is that correct?
Correct, yes.
So we were in a very tight bidding climate.
Well, actually, they're building...
Not for the architect, for the contractor.
They're building a building for us on site, and it's scheduled to open next month, which is right on schedule. It was scheduled a year and a half ago to open in September, and it will, so. Of course, they got it in the drive before all this activity started, so they were, they were the beneficiary of good weather.
Well, this has not been, this has been a discussion we've been having for several months with the contractor and asking them for options and what they could do within the building to not do components of the building and still have us open on time and that sort of thing. And they have really come back with several options, but none of them were really enough to bring our schedule before school starts. You know, none of them saved enough time or recaptured enough time within the schedule to get us where we wanted to be and felt comfortable with it. Because that then assumed that from this point forward, everything was going to go perfect, which, you saw the project in the scope, and you know that's not going to happen. Everything's not going to go perfect from this point forward. There's just a whole lot to be done, too many components to go in. So with that, that's unrealistic to think that, even if they did capture 20 days or 25 days back, assuming forward would be perfect, is not realistic.
Yeah, and as we engage staff more, that's a part of that school, the, there may be slight changes or modifications that they may want to make to the design, just because they're a part of what's going on now. Well, as soon as we direct the contractor to do those changes, they're going to, they're going to hit us with additional days. So those are days that we, we don't know how many they are or when they're coming, but if we start going down that road, then that's going to be coming at us. You know, the schedule as it is just does not give us any recovery time. And you always want to have a Plan B, but in this particular scenario, there is not a Plan B.
So can we get some pros and cons about opening mid-year or opening, or doing it a year?
Not high school mid-year. I think Stan's a...
Why is that? Can we at least have a list of what it would take to open mid-year versus next year?
I think one thing, I mean, that we talked about that's really, I'll say, huh?
You don't like more?
Yeah. I'll say, one, one huge thing is all of the extracurriculars, the athletics, the band and competitions, AP classes that go year-long, kids, yes, staff members moving from one school to another mid-year. So then we have that very distinct time of movement we have to move in January after exams are finished and before they start back for the second semester. So we don't have a week there. Yeah, it's, and I would just say, I'm not the expert, obviously, in curriculum, but I've asked those questions already.
And with this being, with this being, talking about redistricting, you're going to redistrict people halfway during the year? You're going to say, "We're going to redistrict you halfway during the year"? I don't think that's going to work.
Rob, are you satisfied? Do we need to continue?
I don't know, we're not all experts here, but it would be the superintendent that I'm looking for.
I think we are looking for silver linings around this, this situation. It seems like it would give staff longer to get in and get settled, it would give personnel more time to pick all the right people and get all the right leadership in place, and instead of the usual three-month or four-month scramble that occurs. It might be painful, but it would be good when it did open.
If we did open, when?
If we did open, if we did delay, the entire school would be in great shape and ready, as opposed to all the matters that would be left unresolved for a period of time.
I think we all want this school to open with community pride and staff, the student body excitement, and to try to rush things from one school to another in the middle of the year would just, would take away from all of that. And having the, the new band and cheerleaders and whoever else is going to ball, the new student body officers, the student council, have them all come together and...
Getting off on the right foot, probably, is a good thing for the parents, for the students, for the staff and personnel, and all around, starting to help in an ideal way.
So, Mr. Schwartz, can we do this by consensus? Is this something we need a formal vote on?
Well, you've probably got two different, excuse me, you've probably, sorry about that, you've probably got two different matters to deal with. One is how this impacts what Lynn's doing, the redistricting, and the other is the delay of the start of the school.
So dealing just with the delay of the start of the school first?
Right. And I think you can deal with, with that matter right now, if you wanted to, with a vote, where you can, by consensus agreement, put it on consent agenda. As far as the construction delays, I think you'd want to, you know, if you're going to extend any deadlines in the contract, that's a more, that's a deeper dive than what you talked about tonight. But I think the more immediate issue is... about tonight. But I think the more immediate issue is, are we going to open the school this year? And.
In 19?
Yeah, and in in it doesn't sound like you've got many options there.
No, and as someone said earlier, I would rather give the parents, the families and staff even as much warning as possible. So as much notice.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to amend the agenda to place a vote.
So moved, Madam Chair?
Okay, so Dr. Kirk made the motion. Mr. Harrison made the second, and that is to amend the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
And since we didn't discuss, the reason why is we don't typically vote at a work session. And given that we have a meeting a week from now, I would be fine sticking to that practice and voting at the regular business meeting.
Okay, and we can do that. Do we rest the board members?
This is a motion to put it on a consent agenda, which you can pull next week.
We can change that motion to put it on consent. Mr. or Dr. Kirk made the motion.
Madam Chair, I don't see any problems with going ahead. We've got consensus. We need to move out sooner rather than later. Our hair's not on fire, but a week's a week. And if we can if we've got consensus around the table, I'd like to stick to the motion of putting on consent for next week or getting a vote tonight.
Change the motion to put it on consent as opposed to voting tonight?
Let's vote tonight. That's my motion.
Other thoughts?
So you're making a substitute motion now?
Well, I'm waiting to see what the desire of the board is.
Or you're amending the original motion?
I'm not amending it yet.
No, no, I'm asking Mr. Kirk. Dr. Kirk, excuse me.
I have a question. Question? And the reason I'm even asking a question because Lynn, Ms. Reimer, had mentioned about maybe needing some guidance so she could mention it to Cropper. And that's why I was thinking maybe it would be important to maybe make a decision tonight so you could let them know. Is this relevant? I mean, would that be helpful to do something tonight?
Yes, I think, as I said earlier, I don't know what a week changes with the schedule or the actual outcome, but it would give Cropper, GIS, opportunity to prepare, to present to the board next week his his plans for realignment based on that decision. And if he's still up in the air and he doesn't know, he wouldn't be able to come prepared to to share that with you guys. So, yes, it would be beneficial.
If we if we said, we're not going to open it till next year.
Till 2020.
Till 2020. Okay, instead of 2019. Okay.
Okay, so I'll ask that again. So the motion is to delay opening of West Cabares High School from August of 2019 to August of 2020. So all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Powell? Sorry, okay, I didn't hear you. Okay.
I'm sorry. The you did you I don't think you had a motion or a second on that. You had a motion to amend the agenda to vote tonight. That was approved.
Oh, that was the six to one. Okay.
Right. So now you need a motion to do what you were just describing.
Okay, so the motion regarding, okay, so.
Moved that we make a motion to delay the opening of West Cabares from August 2019 to August 2020.
Second that motion.
And Dr. Kirk's second?
I'd still like to hear what the impacts are going to be. Can we get a report on that? Both, but again, I could see the need for the delay. I just don't exactly know or at least hear what our costs are going to be, how that's going to affect things, what we're looking at by that delay.
Beyond what was already said, I'm not sure I understand. So what are we asking for?
The impacts by delaying this opening from next year, like we told we were scheduled to do, to the following year. Obviously, there's costs. An example, you've hired a principal, you're going to have to pay that principal, but that principal won't be doing principal duties for that year. That's an example, you know.
Right.
Probably there's probably many other things. I have no idea what those are. That's what I was asking for.
Okay, so you're just saying it with the decision that so the one you just mentioned, we have certainly discussed internally as a staff, knowing this was possibility. It's one of the only costs that I'm aware of. So I think the costs are minimal. But if you want us to kind of provide you a list of here's what we think that would be, I think it's pretty minimal. We've kind of discussed that this is a possibility, but we can certainly provide you that.
That's what I'm looking for. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so the motion on the table is to delay the opening.
Could I interject?
Yes, sir.
What I would like, though, is since we had this letter from the architect and an idea, it would be a nice to at least update the schedule and give us a real idea of not only what the architect has provided us, but by next week, at least they'll be able to factor in all of water from last week and maybe today, what that impact is. But give us some ideas of what what this really had happened. So, you know, we can kind of know where we are on the schedule or.
Yeah, as soon as we get the next schedule update, I'll share it with you.
And would that be by next Monday?
Probably, what's the date? We have our O A we have our meeting tomorrow, so I may get the pay applications tomorrow and I'll find out what the the schedule update date is for you and let you know.
Thank you.
Okay, are we ready for the motion?
Motion's there.
I know, but all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, so the motion for delay passes seven zero. Thank you. Okay, now you another update for us? So we're going to have an update now on the Hickory Bridge Elementary School.
So we are obviously not quite as far along in the scope of work with the new elementary school that we are with the high school. But our construction schedule and timeline was much shorter with this school than it was with the high school as well. We broke ground back in spring, I guess, about April, May. And we knew that there was rock on this site based on our due diligence and geotech work. But the amount of rock that we thought had captured would be ripable has reared its ugly head and is not ripable and was having to be blasted. So with that said, we are already about 20-plus days behind on the schedule. And again, as we do with the high school, we have had numerous discussions with our consultants, with the contractor, with our geotech firm, with our civil engineers, trying to see how much of an impact this is going to have on the overall timeline of this project. And it is is going to affect it greatly, we're afraid, because we are not done with the rock yet, as much as we would like to be. We continue to run and let me let me step back. The way that we ask to quantify this rock is very challenging and timely. We our directors and our specifications ask that the site contractor and general contractor, for that matter, clean off all of the rock and boulders that they cannot rip or dig up. So that means that they're having to scratch and pull dirt away and trying to capture where all the rock is so that when we quantify that rock, we're we're literally only quantifying the rock and not the the area in between boulders, per se. Once that's done and we quantify it as we're supposed to, the grading contractor then has to come back in and provide some safe level working surface for the drilling rigs to drill the rock in order to blast it. So you're uncovering the rock, measuring it, quantifying it, surveying it. Then the site contractor's having to bring dirt back in, cover it up to give him a surface to drill it. Then he drills it and then you blast it and then we move on. On top of the complexities of that, we are, again, just running into quite a bit more of it that is just going to jeopardize the overall schedule, we're afraid. And we currently, right now, we're 13 months from opening this school and we haven't gone vertical yet. So.
In one way, we, from a owner's standpoint, and dealing with our structural engineers and the architects as well, have major concerns of beginning the structural retaining wall, which is vital to this project. The retaining wall is our step down on this project to help us meet the site elevation changes. And having that wall, any portion of that wall in place prior to the completion of the blasting in the near vicinity of that could jeopardize the structural integrity of that wall. So therefore, we are not letting them begin that construction as they wanted to on schedule, which is unfortunate. But then again, we cannot afford for that to be put in place and have some structural integrity challenged because of the rock. So we we are somewhat forcing a delay in schedule because we won't allow them to start working that portion of the project until the other portion of it is complete.
And they've they've unfortunately lost a week and a half now due to weather because they've had a sizable amount drilled and ready to blast, but the holes are filling up with water and they can't you got to clean every hole out and it's all got to happen at one time. So we've still yet to capture that second blast that we needed to.
We have 200 to 300 holes in the ground and.
How much delay are we looking at this?
Well, currently, the we're 20, probably 22 days. I spoke with Jack Lightner today. We're about 22 days beyond our completion date.
And that's best guess or best estimate or is that?
That's the that's what the schedule. Well, they they've not updated their their schedule. They had their schedule update this past Friday and it has not been sent out yet.
Can I ask you first, can you define mass rock for the benefit of everybody, just so that they all understand what that means as opposed to because you talk about ripable rock versus mass rock? Are we talking quarry type of situation?
At this time, what we what we find is we've had major fluctuations in peaks of rock. Some veins are are ripable with the track hoe and they rip those and move them out. And there are other portions of that that will hit and they cannot go any farther. The rocks very hard in multiple peaks. And we're finding more of those peaks than we anticipated simply because we were doing our borings and they would go to refusal. We did our track digs and they would go to refusal and we kind of calibrated in between where we would go. But you only had so many of those and you had to interpolate all those surfaces. What we're finding is we're having way more peaks than we thought we would have. And in uncovering those, we're creating a situation that the drillers says, I'm sorry, I can't drill that. You know, it's a very steep peak. I've got to have it filled back in so then I can drill through a flat surface to do so. And so that is mass rock. It's mass they have to pull at one time. When they blast the rock, it crumbles. It is very movable, but it has to be blasted first. Now, there's another classification of rock called trench rock. And what we're doing is he's actually blasting below the surface to try to eliminate the amount of trench rock we will encounter, which trench rock means it's only necessary to lay the piping, the plumbing, the storm drainage, that sort of thing. It's a much higher cost per rock because it's only in a very confined space and it has to be very controlled. So by doing the blasting the way he is, we should have a reduction in the amount of trench rock we could see because of the rock. But we are having an overage in the actual mass rock, but it is substantially cheaper than the than the trench rock quantity. So, you know, the trade-off, but it's not near enough trade-off to overcome the fact that we're going to have probably, you know, double or more of the of rock than we anticipated.
So in the question that Rob asked, you gave the impression that you have already started the process of drilling for the mass mass rock to begin the blasting. Is that is that accurate?
Yes, we've already pulled two blasts.
So you've done two blasts and you've still got more to to pull, but you can't because now you're got the weather in your way. And and you don't know how much rock you're going to have to remove to to get to where you need to be?
Yes.
Is that true?
Yes, sir.
We've done some additional digs and tried to quantify it, but we're still, again, we're guessing that where those peaks are going to fall where we dug our holes. But we do have a significantly larger machine on site than we require in the specifications and the contractor has agreed to do that to allow it to rip more rock than it probably would with the smaller. We had a 300 series machine required to rip the rock. He's got a 460 machine, which is one of the larger rigs out there. So he's actually given us a good bang for our buck on ripping as much as he possibly can. So from that standpoint, we feel good about the fact that what he does not rip. It is truly rock and needs to be blasted.
And so will we be, in addition to the rock, we have the rock removal? And will that just be moved to another portion of the property or will we have to remove that rock from the property?
Yes, it's moved to another portion of the property.
Okay, so the only cost we'll encounter is the actual. The only cost that we'll incur is the additional cost for the rock blasting and its removal to another portion of the property, correct?
We have field sections that are more than deep enough to allow us to use that rock as field.
And how long do you think it will be before we actually see the change request to take care of that rock removal?
Well, we have a quantification now from the the surveyors. So we do have a quantity on this next blast, but we're trying to try to get further qualifications so we can go one time with a with a, you know, change for that.
So we should know something by September, October?
I was going to say then probably the next, what are we in, August? Yeah, September.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, is this a decision on potentially delaying this opening? Can we wait a little bit longer because we're right up against the deadline now? Or are we at the point where we just need to?
Ms. Reimer?
I think the second to last bullet point tells you that, doesn't it? What's it going to cost?
Yeah, I don't think they've accelerated because they're not in the building trades yet. They haven't accelerated any movement. They have to get the surface repaired first.
So I think if staff were recommending, we would probably recommend postponing with the high school at the same time. However, obviously, you know, the board can can, if they choose to wait, it would probably be okay. I would, again, say the same thing I said before as far as families, realignment, understanding. If you open one at the other, does that impact families differently? I don't know. But again, just understanding that where we are now, knowing that everything has to go perfect moving forward to even come close, it has to go perfect. And we certainly aren't a perfect world. But again, we'll do whatever the board asks us to do.
And from a construction standpoint, and from an overall moving in from facility standpoint, it would be advantageous if we delayed one to delay both and both came online at the same time that a redistricting all happened all at one time.
Board members, your thoughts? Want to lead off, Ms. Carpenter? Mr. Walter?
I throw it out, same thing. I'd like some pros and some cons on opening it up mid-year or or going a year. And then we could vote on it, you know, next week or next month or whatever. But it appears that you're not going to be able to make this date even if you add additional staffing and working hours? Is that what the I mean, the memo says they can add additional staffing and working hours? Obviously, this building is a whole lot smaller than high school.
Right now, the the construction market is completely saturated and the subs and the trades just do not have available manpower to upsize the project. That's that's the biggest portion. Right now, they're struggling to get the subcontractors to be able to meet their existing schedule with the forces they have and to be able to pull in additional forces or additional subs to help augment. subs to help augment their forces is extremely difficult, and they cannot even find the manpower to almost meet their existing schedule, let alone accelerate the schedule. That's what we're being told.
What about, let's just say we do make a decision that we would delay it. What would that have, what kind of impact would that have on the spike in costs for steel, concrete, gypsum? Is there something in the contract that protects us from huge spikes and holds them, holds the cost in line, I don't want to say holds them, but holds the cost of the building so that we come in near the price that we're...
Correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Reimer, but if we delay the opening of the school, it's not going to necessarily delay the contractual obligation we have with the architect or the general contractor. That all stays the same.
We are not contractually changing the date of the contract. We're only delaying the opening of the school, to your benefit.
Dr. Kirk?
Certainly, I'm concerned that we're not vertical yet, and we open in 13 months. That's a showstopper. I mean, categorically, we cannot open in August 2019, in my humble opinion. I'm not a builder, but I haven't seen anything go up in 13 months. There are few dog houses go up that fast. So, certainly agree that we should not open in August. The question is, do we shoot for a mid-year opening, which is always a goat rope, or do we do it one-felt swoop? That's kind of where I am.
Yes, I think I can speak a little bit, although I wasn't part of it, and some of the people in the room may can speak to a little more. So, the only one that I'm aware of, and there may be another one, was I think we opened Weddington Hills in the middle of the school year, and we were taking all of the membership from that school from one school. So in other words, you were completely alleviating Odell to go to Weddington. I'm pretty sure that's correct, which in itself, I think if you talked to the people that did it, talked about the, there were some major issues with that, but you're, in essence, taking, you know, whatever, 40% of the school and moving them here. In this scenario, it'll depend on what the Cropper stuff says, but we're pretty sure it's going to affect at least three or four elementary schools, and it could be that, kind of the ripple effect of that ends up in some minor way affecting more like 10 or 12 elementary schools. That part of it, in my mind, would make it that it's not really feasible to do in the middle of a school year. So, you know, the end answer is probably it's possible, I guess anything is possible, but it's one thing to move half the school to another location, it's another to move 12 schools slightly, or even three or four pretty substantially. So, in my mind, you know, our recommendation, I can't imagine that we would recommend to do that. And again, this is, you'd still have to be finished, you know, on schedule, or be, you know, in other words, we may not be done until January anyway. I guess we'll wait and see how that happens. But for all the disruptive part of that, do I think it's the best thing for kids in that situation? I would say no.
Okay, Mr. Powell? Mr. Schumacher, anything else? Mr. Harrison?
Growth is a good problem to have. I mean, there are some advantages to this. This allows greater coordination of all the logistics of opening the school up. It's painful, in a sense, and we were looking forward to implementing the redistricting numbers on a certain schedule, but this is going to allow us to do it right, as Ms. Carpenter has said, the first time for both of these facilities. And our job is to make sure it's safe and that it's healthy and within the county budget, and it's going to give administration and staff plenty of time to prepare and get it done right and get it done with a great deal of organization in the summer of that year for both of those facilities.
Ms. Carpenter, any other comments?
And as I said, let's get it right the first time and not rush, because, again, when you rush to do some, that's when you make your mistakes. So let's get it right and take our time. You know, when I was talking about those fills, I have to think, and, you know, we hurried at Mount Pleasant, and I think it was a combination of a couple things, but, you know, those fills down in Mount Pleasant Middle, we're still having some problems with it, but we rushed to try to get in Mount Pleasant Middle, and those fills down there didn't kind of get grown in like they should be, and we're still trying to get those right. Where if we let those fills maybe grow in, gave it more time to get grown in, maybe we wouldn't have had that problem. So, let's take our time and get it right. So, that's where I'm at.
Okay, board, it sounds like we want to amend the agenda again to give Mr. Cropper and company a firm direction. So take a motion to amend the agenda?
So moved.
He says so moved, I'm sorry, Mr. Harrison? And Dr. Kirk made the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of amending the agenda, say aye. Any opposed?
No.
Okay, so 5-2 for the amend.
Okay, so, all right.
And then I'll take a motion to move the school opening date for Hickory Ridge Elementary School from August of 2019 to August of 2020.
So moved.
Mr. Schumacher made the motion, Mr. Harrison made the second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Mr. Powell?
I said aye.
Aye, okay. So that motion passes 6-1 with Mr. Walter dissenting. Okay, thank you.
From an operations facility standpoint, we thank you for making a decision, and what it's worth, I guess, a very wise decision. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. And I failed to mention two items at the beginning of the meeting. First of all, thank you to Deputy Luke Zabo, who is here, School Resource Officer at Northwest Cabarrus High School. Thank you for joining us. And I'd also like to introduce and welcome our new board clerk, executive assistant, Mindy Abbott. So, Mindy, I hope you're ready for us.
I am.
We're glad to have you here.
Thank you.
Okay, next up on the agenda, 4.01 is policies for approval on second reading, and we'll have Ms. Reimer and Ms. Burns come up. We've had no questions. Mr. Schumacher did send something today. Hopefully, we got his answered, and so we're good with consent.
So you, I just want to reiterate, we changed one item on there, and would you just tell them what we changed so that they'll understand?
Sure, yeah. So, we changed the language, the teaching in North Carolina Standard Course of Study instead of using Common Core, and, what was the other one said? I'll see it on there. Yeah, that was it. And then you just had questions specific to what if someone doesn't sign it?
And then a couple typos.
And just a couple of typos, yeah. Okay. Board members, any further questions on the policies?
Which one was that you referred to?
3225, right?
Yes.
And I'd like to see that one on action, please.
Okay, so we'll put technology responsible use on the action agenda? I just ask you, if any questions that you have, please send to us, and we'll try to do all the research we can, okay? Okay, board members, the other policies, 1310, 4150, 4313, 4318, 717240. Can those all go on consent? Consent? So all on consent with the exception of the 3225, 4312, 7320, multi-referenced policy on technology responsible use. Thank you, ladies. Okay, next we have item 4.02, board member training credits. And board members, I just wanted to make a note, for those of you who do have training credit on here, we will, I will ask Mindy to add an agenda item for next week in the reports area, where if you have attended training and were, we will be approving your credits next week if you would give a not-to-exceed-five-minute kind of synopsis of what your training activity was.
Well, no, five minutes for each, or five minutes total.
How about if you do 10 minutes total?
10 minutes, okay. I just wondered if it was five minutes per session, or...
So, on this item, we have Mrs. Carpenter attended the North Carolina Association of School Resource Officers Conference. She attended the trauma toolkit training, and also the 2018 School Safety Summit. She is filing for 49 hours of training for us to approve and submit to NCSBA. Yes, our overachiever here once again. And Dr. Kirk attended the racial equity training and is filing for 14 hours of training to be accredited by NCSBA. So any questions on those?
Ms. Carpenter, you will be pithy next week, won't you?
Do what?
You will be pithy, won't you, in your synopsis, we hope? Thank you. No, we're very proud, I'm very proud of you.
Okay, are you all okay with consent agenda for these items?
Yes, I'm pleased.
Okay, thank you. And item 4.03 is requesting our approval for travel to the NCSBA District 6 meeting, which is not really too far of travel. It'll be held in Charlotte Mecklenburg School District, but I don't believe we have the exact location yet. So...
Does it have a ready-to-hand to go?
So we have six board members who have requested, or actually, all seven of us, I'm on the other page, all seven of us have requested to go, so I guess we can self-approve for each other that we want to attend. This is always one of the, I think, nice events, to be able to network with some of our fellow school board members in the immediate area, including in District 6. So can we put that on consent?
Consent.
Okay. Thank you. And next we have Ms. Klutz joining us for our, the budget resolution for 2018-19 school year.
Yes, thank you. Turn that down just a tad. So we're at the point of the budget where we are in final form, the budget resolution document that maybe somebody will pull up for me. There we are. And so we've had a couple of questions come in over the weekend. I greatly appreciate the notice, it's nearly a $400 million budget, and while I know most of it, I don't know every single line item, so I do appreciate the advanced questions. So there were a few. Mr. Walter asked about the change in regular instructional service in Section 1, that's the local budget. There's about a $2 million change from year to year. So the majority of those expenses changed because you'll have salary and benefit expenses, so we matched the state. Remember, the teachers are six, you know, six and three-quarters percent increase, you've got health insurance increases, you've got retirement increases. Also, the county spent, allocated $675,000 to maintain the supplement in the manner that it was already, and then in addition, $300,000 approximately to increase it from 7.75 to 8%. So, the first salary and benefit changes was about a million, and the second thing that I mentioned, the supplements, was about another million. So that's where your change is from year to year. Certainly want to give the county credit for that. Increased our budget, our local budget, about $3.5 million this year. So, kudos to them for that. The next one was the question about operational support services in that same Section 1, almost $600,000 increases. The county was able to, as part of that $3.5 million, they allocated dollars for grounds and facilities and technology, and also, again, your salary and benefit increases are in that number two. The next one in that section is policy leadership and public relations services, almost a $200,000 increase, excuse me, increase in salary and benefits to match the state, and then also, there's some legal expenses. Our legal expensive has, expenses has increased from last year to this year, so we were budgeting for that. Okay. Next question was in Section 3. The question was, why is there reductions in special population services? And really, there's not, as you look over the variety of funds, it's really a move of those expenses from one fund to the other with our restart flexibility. Last year, I did not place the EC staff in restart, but this year I did, as I evaluate what is best for our economic dollar, I place things in the appropriate places, and so that's the difference that you see there. There's a $900,000 difference from, not 900, $90,000 difference in child nutrition services that was not there last year. The reason that is there is because we charge child nutrition indirect cost, then we put it over into a local account so that they can buy small purchases without having to jump through the hoops of the federal guidelines. If you want to buy a repair part with federal guidelines, you have to get three prices for a $5 part. By doing it this way, it's a legal way to move, to charge indirect cost and put it into the local account and allow them not to have to do that, and better utilize our staff Section 5 indicating a reduction in our 5300 alternate programs and services. Truly, there's not a reduction there, it's just a timing issue. It's our Read to Achieve Summer Programs, the state doesn't allocate that at the beginning of each year, it allocates it during the year, so it's just really, I'll have an adjustment for you later. So it's really just timing. Section 7, the question about special population services, that is a, that's our federal section. Federal grants do not come in on July 1st, unfortunately. They come in later through the year, so we have the big ones, the Title I and the EC all allocated, but throughout the year, we're going to get significantly more, and that's going to be your change there. One other big change is that we had a pass-through person, a DPI, Behavior Support Person, that was basically just housed here, and we paid them on our payroll, they sent the money. That person left our employment and is now at a different, they hired at a different county, so that pass-through just won't happen. The final one was on child nutrition services. There was a question of why was the revenue lower in 1819 than 1718, simply because we overprojected our revenue last year, and we adjusted to actual this year. Let's see, one more on Section, is it 15? Anyway, it doesn't matter. The question is, what is the Explain a Trust and Agency Fund? So that is where a government agency holds funds that are not theirs. In this specific example, it is our scholarship fund, so we have scholarship donations for our Shine on Cheyenne Scholarship, and so we are the trustee, and we hold those dollars for them. And one more, let's see, this one is similar to Mr. Walter's, about Special Population Support Services 6200. Same kind of thing, the federal dollars have not all dropped, and also, that Behavior Support Person is not in our LEA anymore, it's moved out.
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am. Back in Section 5, under System Wide Support, Technologies Report Services, 910,000 less on that line. Could you help us understand that?
Yes, sir.
I'm out, please, thank you.
Be happy to. So that was a one-time allocation last year from the state for, Dr. Probst is familiar with, it was just an allocation of equipment for our district, so we're hoping, obviously, that we'll get another one-time allocation, but because it is not a recurring amount, that's why you saw that go down.
Any others?
I had one more, and again, I thank you for putting together the crosswalk so we can actually see what the differences are year to year. That makes it very helpful. The other one was the Kids Plus, it looked like it had increased. What was the reason for that?
Sorry, I missed that one, I'm sorry, but I do have the answer here. So, the question was, what increase? Was it the rates or the number of students that we are caring for? And we did not increase the rates. We did increase the number of students that we're responsible for and caring for. We did decrease the rate for staff members, which then increased the number of students that we care for.
Other questions?
I think, I'm not sure what section. You had mentioned the increase in teacher supplement. Was that Section Five?
No, that would be Section One, would be your teacher supplement increase. Fifty-one hundred, where it's, just on page one, instructional services, right there.
Okay. And I think you had said it was about 300,000 to get from 7.75 percent to eight percent?
That's correct.
So, that was a one-quarter of a percent increase?
Yes, that's correct.
For the teaching supplement?
That's correct.
And just as a note, I think that's the quarter percent, including the full, now, eight percent on the raise from the state.
The eight, including to continue at 7.75 on the state was 697,000, I think. So, the county paid, was able to maintain that, so it cost them 697,000. And to go from 6.75 to eight, it was about 300,000. So, there was an investment of nearly a million dollars in supplements this year.
So, the good news is that the eight percent will be on the total new salary?
Absolutely.
For the new school year.
And that's, and that costs $700,000, yeah.
Other questions, board members? Okay, this will be on the action agenda next week to approve the budget resolution for the new school year. Okay, next, we have five point oh two, and welcome Ms. Dawn Baker to talk to us about school nutrition program.
Hi there. The procurement plan that has been presented to you guys, it basically reflects a change in the federal law in purchasing requirements. We all had extensive training in this, all the new procurement laws last spring from, that was sponsored by DPI Services. Just a few highlights of the changes. One of the first ones is coming through the Code of Ethics. This has got to be a part of the procurement plan now that outlines our district's federal ethics, our local ethic policies. Another area of the items is talking about the micropurchasing. When we included this piece last year, we did not have the full, some of the changes on how that comes about. They have redefined that, so that is included, all the new language is included in for that. Then, we also have in there the purchases that are outlined in the section for sole-source purchasing. And then, we're also coming back and identifying if, we also have the, we're also allowed to do voluntary purchasing alliances, such as the North Carolina State Purchasing Alliance. Anything other than that, we also have to make sure that they have met the state requirements for purchasing. And so, those are outlined in this procurement plan as well. Those are just basically the outlined procedures of this. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer those for you.
This is a quick question. What is the difference between the SFA and LEA?
The School Food Service Authority, which is my department, and the LEA is the Local Education Authority, which is the Board of Education.
Okay, so there's a difference, okay.
Is this presentation a twelve-month presentation or just the ten-month of the school?
I apologize, I didn't hear. Could you repeat that for me?
Or is your presentation here for a full twelve months, including the summer?
Yes, yes, sir.
Food programs?
Yes, sir.
So, not just for the school year, but for the full?
That includes all the programs that fall under the federal reimbursement plans.
Other questions on the school nutrition program procurement plan? These all need to be on action. Yeah. Okay. So, that will, five point oh two, the plan will go forward to action. And then, we will go to five point oh through the approval of the food supplies, milk, chemical bids?
I want to make a great note of this. It is that time of year that we are coming to you to ask approval for the renewals or re-award of our food and supply bid, our produce bid, our milk bid, and our chemical supply bid. The prices for this current year are provided for you for Gordon Food Service and RNH Produce. Paul Campbell Dairies and Alco, which are our milk and chemical supply company, they have agreed to roll over with the same pricing that they have since the original bid, which we've been very pleased with their services and what they do for our school system. And same thing with RNH Produce and Gordon Food Service. They have provided top-notch service for our county. And with Gordon Food Service, what we're finding, that more and more of their drivers are moving into our district and have students, and they're so pleased that they have students and they get to see the end results of delivering food to our students and the great comments. But Cabarrus County Schools has been a great home for Gordon Food Service. And our district speaks loudly for the drivers when they're coming in. That's what we keep hearing consistently, too. Side note on that. Any questions?
When I look at this, it looks like the Gordon Food Supplies actually went down. Did they go down by about 600,000 or something?
We did see a reduction in what we originally bid, pricing in 1617. And some of those are coming from, because we are with the North Carolina Purchasing Alliance, and that group bids eighty percent of our purchases directly with manufacturers. So, we are getting the best price upfront. So, that has now culminated into our third year with Gordon Food Service. We are also continuing to look at our product mixes and availability in menu choices for our students. If there's concerns that something's not going well, we always continue to look at that and look at additional pricing. So, some of the additional reductions are coming from menu changes to reflect the current trends out in the commercial food business, you know, students going to Chipotle and just, you know, so we're looking at different ways that our product mixes different.
So, on the revenue side, this means that possibly, we won't have to have a lunch price increase next year if we continue, if we receive our... What, what are you saying? Uh-uh? You don't mean a corner house?
I'm going to play the fifth on that at this point in time.
So, this person behind me is speaking for you, is that what?
But we are always constantly looking at how can we streamline and be more efficient with our funds. And so, we're looking at a lot of different things. But yes, we're always looking at what's in the best interest of our students and in for the county.
Any other questions regarding the approval of food supplies, milk, and chemical bids?
I appreciate all your work that you're doing here, spending time with me, helping me understand some of this stuff. But you were asking for their approval of chemical, what are those values? What is that, what are those numbers?
We are paying, I believe it's like 25 cent per carton for one percent milk. We're paying around 26 and a half cent for chocolate milk, 24 cent, because I could get you exact prices.
So, it's on a per-item basis, but you don't have, you don't have an overall budget or whatever?
No, because those...
It's not a flat amount, is that what you're saying?
Correct. The Alco bid is a per-price, per-month, based on the enrollment size of the school. And so, that varies based on the size of the school. But it's a flat rate per month, and it has not changed in five years.
Okay, and then, we had the discussion on what I, you're looking at these bids from 2015, 16, and I guess you explained, because we are in a purchase alliance, I guess is what you'd said, but if there was a local company that wanted to get interested in providing food for Cabarrus County, how would they do that? Or they have to wait till the alliance does a rebid, or how does that work?
Anytime that a company wants to reach out to us, we can certainly look and get their information, share with them a copy of the contract, I mean, as far as the overall contract, what we're finding is sometimes we're just getting information to potential, you know, people that want to work with Cabarrus County Schools. And depending on if it's similar items, we can certainly look at if we need to rebid. But also, we have to look at, you know, reliability and service to our county and to our school system. They also have to have assurances of being able to meet recalls and all of the purchasing side guidelines that you must have in place when you're delivering produce. Just with that, with any food vendor, you got to think about when there's food recalls. You've got to have systems in place that you can track down who your supplier are. And so, again, with produce, but then, if anything else, we will always entertain the opportunity to meet with anybody who's interested in working with Cabarrus County Schools. They just need to reach out to us.
Little question. Have we always offered chocolate milk?
Yeah.
It never fell off of the menu for a while, did it? I got the impression it fell out of favor nationally for a while because of federal regulations, but we...
New York State, I believe, was one of the first states to eliminate chocolate milk from their product mix. And when the federal guidelines came out in 2010 with all the new guidelines, there were rumors and talks of eliminating chocolate milk. But where we compromised is any milk that was flavored, that was going to be offered, had to be a non-fat skim basis. And so, that was a good compromise with the powers that be to make everybody nutritionally happy and sound. I'm of the opinion, I'm not a registered dietitian, but if we can get calcium milk in students, calcium is the one thing that we struggle with. And you have students who have brittle bones, who are not, you look at your athletes and heavy book bags that they're carrying sometimes. So, to me, that's, if we can get it, if it's flavored, strawberry, reduce the sugar and fat, that's great.
Any other questions? Okay, so this will be on the action agenda next week as well? Thank you, Dawn. And the next item, five point oh four, the Beginning Teacher Support Plan.
Welcome. Good evening. So, we pride ourselves in Cabarrus County on supporting the growth and development of our beginning teachers. And this is required by the state of North Carolina that we annually review our Beginning Teacher Support Program. There are several key personnel in this program. That includes our Assistant Superintendent of HR, Ms. Glenda Jones, Director of Human Resources, Keisha Khan, myself as the Beginning Teacher Coordinator. And then, at the school level, the school administrators play a key role, as well as lead mentors, and most importantly, the mentors. The mentors are the teachers working directly with the beginning teachers. For our beginning teachers this year, we have a three-day orientation planned for August 13th, 14th, and 15th, next week at JM Robinson High School. Our teachers will receive training on the Beginning Teacher Support Program, the evaluation process and standards. And our curriculum and instruction department will also do PD on the standard course of study and PLCs. So, it'll be lots of great PD for our new teachers. They'll also be provided several resources. They'll receive two books, The First Days of School by Harry Wong and Teach Like a Champion. Both of these are going to be integrated into the PD. And then, the lead mentors will be working with the beginning teachers with the Teach Like a Champion book throughout the school year as well. All of the documents will be housed on our website in an electronic handbook from that orientation.
So, that's a new book this year? It wasn't on last year?
Teach Like a Champion is a new book. We provided one copy to each school last year. This year, we were able to provide it to our first-year teachers.
Did we get extra funding for that?
Our Title II budget went up slightly, so we're pleased with that, but we were able to use that to support our new teachers. At the new teacher orientation on Wednesday, we're going to have our luncheon that the Cabarrus Chamber is sponsoring once again. We have over thirty vendors, last time I talked with them, so it's going to be a great event on Wednesday, August 15th. And then, we're also excited to have the North Carolina Teacher of the Year. He's going to come and be the keynote for our first-year teachers on Tuesday. So, I'm excited to hear him speak as well. I think that'll be fun. For our lateral entry...
If you haven't heard him, he's worth hearing.
Oh, good. That's great.
His first name is Freebird, by the way.
Freebird McKinney, yes. Our lateral entry teachers are the teachers who do not have an education background, a formal education background. So, we have additional supports in place for our lateral entry teachers. This year, we're partnering with the North Carolina New Teacher Support Program, and they're going to be providing coaching for those first-year lateral entry teachers. That'll be in the schools. They'll be meeting with those teachers at least once a week. And our new first-year lateral entry teachers will be invited to a two-day institute for professional development through this program. And they'll also receive monthly professional development throughout the school year, which we've done in the past, will just be utilizing our coaches, and they'll be using some of the coaching that they do in the classroom for the professional development. So, it'll be a little more cohesive.
So, this is different, this is new, or at least it wasn't in your last year's presentation?
Correct. This is new. So, this, again, is due to our additional funding in the Title II budget, which is to support those new teachers. So, it should be a great support for our lateral entry teachers.
Is this out of a college or what is this?
The program is housed at ECU, but is a North Carolina University program. That's the support program, and they're in several districts and seen a lot of great growth and results with the teachers. The teachers will also receive the First Year Teacher Survival Guide. This they received in the past. The coaches are going to work with that book throughout their PD so that that's integrated in those PD sessions as well. For our late lateral entry new hires, they will receive a two-week orientation where they're observing teachers. They're getting the same information that they would have gotten if they were here in the summer. And they'll also be meeting with mentors, lead mentors, and their school administrators over those two weeks. And then, at the school level, once again, at the school level, the lead mentors will work with administrators for school-level orientation for the beginning teachers, just to get acclimated to their school, learn more about, meet their mentor, work with their mentor, and get ready for the students on the first day. And in human resources, we house the Beginning Teacher Support Program, so we facilitate that process. We facilitate the district orientation and serve as a liaison to the state and to the beginning teachers, the mentors and lead mentors. We also oversee the documentation of our beginning teachers. We train all of our mentors. We have over 600 mentors trained at this point. So, that training, we've had two trainings this summer, and that goes through the school year to make sure that we capture all of our mentors, that they all receive that training. And then, the Beginning Teacher licensure is through HR, as well as a five-year Beginning Teacher Support Program review process. At the school level, this is where the heart of the work happens. And so, the administrator support is crucial in this. Administrators are those who are going to assign the mentors at the school level to really try to make sure that they're making the best fit for that beginning teacher. They will collaborate with the lead mentors on the professional development throughout the school year and provide that coaching and support and oversee the process in general. And our lead mentors are, they will serve as the liaison between myself, I do a lot of communicating to the lead mentors. They're also going to be retraining the mentors at the beginning of the school year so that we know all of the mentors are getting a review of what the requirements are. And they coordinate the support for beginning teachers throughout the school year. They also oversee the documentation for the mentors at the school level.
Is that one per school?
There's one lead mentor per school. There are a couple of schools that have a larger number of beginning teachers who choose to split that role, but for the most part, it's one. And our mentors are really the ones who are working, as I said, with the beginning teachers. And so, this could be supporting them in whatever area they need support in. It could be classroom management, it could be lesson planning, instructional strategies, could be parent communication. And they are asked to meet with the beginning teachers a minimum of once a week. I think what we find is that this is typically more than once a week, almost daily sometimes, because they're truly that support system for that new teacher. And for our beginning teachers, the evaluation process has not changed. They will do a self-assessment at the beginning of the year, work on a professional development plan, which is reviewed by both their mentor and an administrator. And then they receive three full administrative observations, a minimum of 45 minutes each. The first one with a, the first one is announced with the pre-conference, and then the other two are full observations. And then they also receive a peer observation by someone who's not the mentor. The mentor is supposed to be for support only, so that's why it should be from somebody else. And then the summary evaluation for all of our beginning teachers is done by the principal. And another thing we're doing this year in, as an additional support, is curriculum, the Curriculum and Instruction Department is going to be having six sessions for our beginning teachers in math and reading instruction. So we're excited about this new professional development opportunity. So it'll be for first and some second-year teachers. And the first session is going to be held the next week, next Thursday and Friday, Thursday and/or Friday for those new teachers. And so it's a year-long coaching cycle, so we can see that professional development help them grow throughout the school year. And every year, I ask our first-year teachers to give advice to our new teachers. I think it's fun to see what they have to say. But you can see from the advice that oftentimes they're, they talk about their mentors or refer back to their mentors. So talk to your mentor every day, talk to them about your ups and downs, don't be afraid to ask a lot of questions, and take in all of the advice from experienced teachers. And my favorite quote this year is, and I think it's what we're trying to inspire all of our new teachers to do, is to find a love of your work. That way, it's not work at all. So that was, that was the best one I've seen, but inspires all of us. So that's all I have. Are there any questions?
I have one question. And how are you, when you do, you work with your first-year teachers? I know that the PLC is becoming more and more an integral part of the classroom experience for, for the teachers, at least as far as learning. Is that a part of the mentoring process in teaching them how to integrate into the PLC and how to become good members of those learning communities?
So it starts with our new teacher orientation. So on the first day of new teacher orientation, the Curriculum and Instruction Department talks with the new teachers about the PLC and what PLCs are all about and what our expectations are in Cabarrus County. And then in mentor training, we talk about PLCs and what an important role that plays. Sometimes the mentor's in the same PLC, sometimes they're not. But we role-play scenarios specifically about PLCs and helping those teachers, either advocating for those teachers or helping them advocate for themselves and really becoming a part of a cohesive PLC.
Mr. Harrison?
Can you go into some detail, please? I was looking at Item J, the checklist, and in a few cases, it references communicating with the parents. But is there any particular advice or structure around orienting new teachers in their communication with parents? The frequency, the level of detail? How are first-year teachers encouraged or supported to work directly with parents and keeping parents informed?
I think that they're definitely encouraged with that positive communication right up front. I think how they're supported is going to be at the school level. The mentors, you know, we talk to the mentors about supporting them through that communication. But if, if there was something more than what the mentor could advise them on, then they certainly would be directing them to talk with their school administrators on that. But the positive communication, every school I've been in and taught in three schools in Cabarrus County, and that was one of the first things that was mentioned at our orientation at the school level, was to make sure that you get that first positive communication going with the parents so that you can continue that through the school year.
Mr. Walter?
Just comparing last year's presentation to this year's presentation. Last year's presentation had a BTSP standards on it.
That hasn't changed. I just felt that that slide was redundant. But I'm sorry, so I took it out. I thought it made it too lengthy. But the Beginning Teacher Support, the mentor standards have not changed, and the plan hasn't, you know, nothing on that slide has affected the actual BTSP plan.
Okay. How many beginning teachers are we going to expect this year?
First-year teachers, my last look today was 70.
70. So we have 600 mentors, but 70.
So we have plenty to choose from.
Okay, and then mentors, do they get compensated at all?
Mentors receive two days of flex time.
Two days of flex time to be a mentor.
Yes. Now, the 70, that's first-year teachers. I don't have a, last year, we had about 300 BT1s, 2s, and 3s total, but I don't have a number for that this year yet.
Okay. And when you do, just, you can email that or put it in a report or something?
Sure.
Thank you.
So the total teachers in the program are the combination of those three years, or three levels of experience?
Yes, yes.
Other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
The board members, we're ready to convene in closed session. I'll ask Mr. Swartz, is this motion accurate or do we need to adjust it at all?
The motion's fine.
Okay. So I'll take a motion that the board convene in closed session pursuant to General Statute 143, 318, 11A3, to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, which privilege is hereby acknowledged pursuant to General Statute 143, 318, 11A6, to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer employee or prospective public officer employee, or to hear or investigate a complaint, charge, or grievance by or against an individual public officer employee to review personnel recommendations.
Sub move.
Second.
Madam Chair, before you take a vote on that?
Mm-hmm.
On the last item, the Beginning Teacher Support Program, did you determine to put that on action or consent?
It's on action by default on the agenda.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Dr. Kirk made the motion, Mr. Walter made the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the board is now in closed session. Thank you to our audience.